Welcome. Glad you all made it in. If you had any snow issues, welcome. This is the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners's formal session for February 28th, 2019, and appreciate you being here. At this time, we'll have the flag salute. Barry, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now is the time we have set aside for invocation prayer, and joining us is a gentleman who, member of our community, who has agreed to come and do our last scheduled invocation, so we appreciate you being here. Alan Schwartz and his wife are members of the Coast Hills Community Church, and they began there right after the church started in 1999. And over the last 20 years, Alan has served in just about every capacity there with many, many groups. So, we appreciate Alan being here to do the invocation. So, Alan, if you wanted to come up here and...
Well, I just...
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have written down here, I understand Commissioner Olson is in Washington DC, is that right?
Correct.
Oh, good. We wish him much success. I just thank you Commissioners Kula and Sterrett for this opportunity this morning to be here. I want to share with you first, I don't believe it's by accident. Just real quickly, a little bit over a year ago, a good friend of mine and fellow member of our church really had a call on his life to begin to pray for the courthouse for Yamhill County. And for the past year, he's been prayer walking around this courthouse almost on a daily basis, probably five times a week because his job has him commute through McMinnville and back every day. And I got the opportunity to join him in his prayer walks and prayer driving, if the weather's bad and you choose to drive. So I don't believe it's by accident that I'm here and get an opportunity to pray a blessing over this meeting. In those walks and in those drives, we pray for three primary people groups: those in authority making critical decisions, the supporting staff that works diligently to assist and execute the decisions that are made here, and finally, we pray for the people that pass through the courts, the jails, and the other programs that impact all of our community. We believe as followers of Jesus, we've been adopted into the Heavenly Father's family as sons and daughters and are called to be ministers of reconciliation. Finally, we're temples or carriers of His Holy Spirit. And it's from this position in Christ that I would like to share the following blessing. To those in authority making critical decisions, Lord, we pray they would be given the wisdom of Solomon, the confidence to make the right decisions versus the easy decisions, that they would fully understand and appreciate the task they've been entrusted with and steward it with joy regardless of the circumstances. To the supporting staff that works diligently to assist in making these decisions happen, we pray they would find great satisfaction in all that they do, that unity would prevail here in the courthouse and at home in their families, that they would be given a supernatural patience and compassion as they interact with the community, and that they would be kept physically and emotionally safe at all times. We also pray for all the people that pass through the courts, jails, and other programs that impact our county. We pray healing over all those that come here, relational healing, physical healing, financial healing, and spiritual healing. Finally, we pray blessing over the courthouse in our county. We pray it will become known for its love of people and our Lord Jesus Christ, and in His mighty name, say amen.
Amen. Alan, thank you. And thank you, friend. Thank you. Appreciate your being here. All right, at this time, we have set aside for public comment on any topic that is not on our agenda or quasi judicial land use matter, a topic scheduled for a public hearing. So, at this point, if you have public comment to make on something other than what we are public hearing or what's on the agenda, we invite you to come forward, and I have an intent to speak hard for Mr. Tom Hammer. So, Mr. Hammer, if you could come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Tom Hammer, 23701 Wallace Road, Reedland, Oregon. I'm talking about public procedures and public expenditures. Until December 20th, it was legitimate that a public official could claim to have been duped into endorsing illegal activities regarding the procedures and expenditures of the Yamhailis West Sider Trail. The Lupa decision made it clear that the county had acted illegally for years. The remand was overwhelmingly in favor of the plaintiff. If reading the Lupa decision was technically challenging for those of us that didn't go to law school, or didn't even aspire to go to law school someday, the hand-carried letter from the victorious attorney in that hearing put it in layman's terms, made it just so plain that nobody could continue to endorse these illegal activities and claim to be legitimately duped. The only way that continuation of endorsing these illegal activities could occur is if you're a winning and willing accomplice to lawless behavior. I hope that all Commissioners consider their responsibility to put the rule of law above partisan politics. I wish some courage in future decisions. Your constituents must live by the rule of law, and I don't think there should be any exceptions to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer.
At this time, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Do we have, before we move on to the consent agenda, I just want to let you know that we are going to remove item number two, and that is because County Council is going to rework some of the specifics of that contract. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, we will be bringing that back, I'm guessing, next week?
Yes.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve item B, the consent agenda, minus item two?
Make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the consent agenda, minus item two.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show. Commissioner Kula and Commissioner Sterrett voted in the affirmative. Commissioner Olson is excused. He's traveling to Washington DC. Under all business, we have none. Other business, item D, we have the D1, the consideration of approval and authorization to close the sale of tax lot R4416DC00502, also known as 1235 Northeast 14th Street, McMinnville, and all improvements therein, the property to the Yamhill County Mission and Oregon Public Benefit Corporation in the amount of $10,591.31 plus closing costs and fees. The property was declared surplus on January 24th, 2019, per Board Order 19-20. So, for those of you who've been following this odyssey, this is a surplus, a property that had been in tax foreclosure, and the recommendation was to first use it as a youth outreach center. That didn't work, but the mission stepped up and was willing to pay the back taxes and is now going to be doing the considerable repairs on this building across the street from the mission, and is going to be able to utilize that for housing, for job training services, and to further their mission of helping those who are homeless in our county. So, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve item D, the consideration approval of the sale.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item D1. Any further discussion?
No further. Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, thank you, County Council, who's not here, and County Council, who is here, and staff and everybody who's worked on this. This has been a long time coming. So, if there's no other further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Commissioners Kula and Sterrett voting in the affirmative. So, at this time, we will close the formal session, open our public hearing, and that is Dr. C-11-18/SDR-17-18, which is an appeal of the Planning Director's denial of a conditional use and site design review application for a solar facility consisting of approximately 12 acres, the applicant being Forefront Power LLC. Do we have any abstentions by members of the board?
Nope.
And are there abstentions to jurisdiction of the board to hear the matter before it?
Oh, there are objections to jurisdiction.
Objections.
And I think we, Matt will explain it in a few moments, but I believe we do not have jurisdiction to hear this because of some timelines that were not met in the application process, and I will turn that over to Matt to explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Friday.
So, under ORS 215.427, county has the responsibility to notify applicants on a land use matter within 30 days to receive whether the application is complete or incomplete. If the county determines an application is not completely submitted, the applicant has 180 days from the date that they first submitted the application to either, one, submit all of the missing information, two, submit some of the missing information and a written notice that no other information will be provided, or three, provide written notice that none of the missing information will be provided. In this case, staff notified the applicant 10 days after receipt what information would be required to complete the application. Nearly six months later, 178 days after the application was submitted, the applicant submitted some more information that was missing, but not all of it. And their statement didn't even address some of the missing items that we asked for that were not included. They provided no statement saying that no further information was provided. And actually, in their appeal application, they mentioned that, oh, we're going to continue to submit. So, they showed a willingness to continue submitting. The problem is, by not completing one of those three options, on day 181, the application becomes void under state law. So, at this time, the county believes that the application was void on that 181st day after submission, and therefore, there is no jurisdiction by the county to make further, take further action on this application.
And there was a recent court decision, and I believe Todd's taken a quick look at this. He just got back, and we dealt with this at 9:00 AM this morning, so he hasn't had a lot of time to look at it, but it's Bora Architects Incorporated versus Tillamook County, 291 OR App 537. And it states under the conclusion, it says, because Seabreeze, the applicant, was notified of the information missing from the application as required by subsection two, Seabreeze had to act as provided in ORS 215.427 sub four before the 181st day after it first submitted its application. Seabreeze did not do that, and accordingly, its application was void under statute as of, and then they give the date, January 12th, 2016, and the county could not approve it. So, it's been concluded fairly recently that we would not have jurisdiction in this because they did not meet the deadline of submitting the additional information within 180 days, or submitting normally a portion of it and making a statement saying they were not going to submit anymore, or making a statement that they were not going to submit additional information. And one of the reasons this is important is because there has been both a change in the county code since the application was first submitted, and there's also been a change in the state administrative rule that does not allow solar facilities on class one and two soils, and this is on class two soils.
Thank you, Mr. Friday. Mr. Sadlo?
Yes, Madam Chair, I did have an opportunity to look at that case and to talk with the planners about it, and I think that probably you shouldn't be making a decision about whether or not you believe you have jurisdiction and just not having the hearing if you believe that you don't. But I think that it's probably appropriate to open the hearing for the limited purpose of allowing the parties, other parties, to comment on what the Planning Department is saying about you not having jurisdiction.
So, at this particular point in time, the testimony from, actually, anybody at this point would be strictly on the question of jurisdiction.
Thank you for clarifying.
I think that would be an appropriate way to proceed.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question, so thank you.
So, Commissioner, is that something that you would recommend?
That's what I would recommend.
Okay. So, then, at this...
Commissioner, Chair, what do you?
Yeah, no, I think that us making the decision without hearing from input regarding just the jurisdiction question, and that's what this would be about, would this be, the question would be whether or not the county has jurisdiction based on, this is precedent, there is case law on this. So, I don't know, do we want to, do we have an order by which we go, or do we just...
I would say you'd ask the applicant to respond to the question of jurisdiction, and it was noted in the staff report, it should not be a surprise about this, and then see if others who are opponents wish to testify about it.
Okay. So, then, thank you, Mr. Friday. Thank you, Mr. Sadlo. Thank you, Matt. At this point, we'll hear from the applicant, and the question is regarding the county's jurisdiction to hear this. So, if you could come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
So, Shannon Noloma, I'm with TRC Environmental, working on the power of power.
And Ian Bowe, I'm also with TRC Environmental, working on the power of power.
And I'm Kimberly David, also with TRC, trying to western solar activities, work for power.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon's going to start addressing the question.
So, just the question of jurisdiction is, obviously, that's what I found out. I have a copy of an email from Matt, wrote the email, that says...
Can you all hear? It's at our... I just want to pause. It looks like folks can't hear, so...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and I think that's important.
That's your time.
Thank you.
We have a email from October saying that our application was deemed complete and was sent out for public review. I believe that was in the paper we just sent out.
And if not, we have copies of that to share. So, we were under the impression that our application was deemed complete, and as it did go out to public comment, we felt that this was within the jurisdiction of the county.
Additionally, as Matt has mentioned, we have been forthcoming with information as requested, and we have revised our site plan based on comments received from the county as well as the public, and we're very interested in working within the parameters of the county ordinances and willing to work together to get this out.
And I would like to see the email, because Matt had indicated me that it did not deem the application complete, but that he said he was going to send the information out, send out the notes.
And we have additional copies of that.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Over here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, that shoots down the jurisdiction issue.
And we really believe that if you allow us to continue, this is going to be an ongoing process that we work with the county and the community. We've already made some pretty significant adjustments to the site plans, which we'd love to share with you today, as well as all the information that's either deemed deficient or insufficient for the purposes of this project.
Is this effective?
Thank you.
What date?
Let's give them a minute. Okay, thank you for your patience.
Mr. Sadlo?
I think we should be able to hear from anybody else who wants to comment on this, if that's all the extent of your comments, and then we will address that.
Is that all you have to say regarding jurisdiction?
Yeah, I would just ask that if it is deemed that we can proceed, we do have a presentation put together with additional information, and we would really like the opportunity to present that to all of you.
Thank you.
And just to echo Ian's and Shannon's comments, we've been working with you, and we see this as an ongoing process. We felt we were under the jurisdiction of having a presentation of additional information today, and we appreciate your time, and would really like to move forward with you.
Well, let's determine whether or not we can even do that, and then we'll go forward.
But thank you. I think we both saw all the information too, you know, in paper form, which is helpful.
Great.
Thank you. Is...
Yes.
No. No, I was just going to say, if anyone else would like to comment on the question of whether or not the county has jurisdiction in this particular case.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman? If you could state your, you know the drill.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Sid Friedman, 14286 Northwest Silvermore Valley Road, Yamhill, Oregon. Deadlines have consequences, and we discovered that or saw that very recently in another solar case, Red Prairie, out by Sheridan, where the opponents, through no fault of their own, were unable to make a case to the Commissioners because the county had missed a deadline. And the deadlines in ORS 215 are clear. I did have a chance to very quickly read the court case that Mr. Sadlo or Mr. Friday referred to, and the court case seems pretty clear cut, and in this case, the applicant didn't meet their deadline, they didn't meet their statutory obligations, and it seems clear that the application is void.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to comment on jurisdiction? If there isn't any, so this latest email, how does that, I'm sorry. Yes, did you want to comment about?
So, it's not in alignment with my comments, so I still have that.
Actually, this is just regarding jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay.
So, my name is Simeno Arabeo. I live at 20501 Northwest Russell Creek Road, Yamhill. I think that, I want to echo the comments that Mr. Friedman provided. I think that it's really important to be clear that there are deadlines and there is a process. You know, we've undergone that process in our own case for 18 months, and I truly understand and feel, you know, that we have to abide by those guidelines. And what is really critical at this point is the fact that, you know, is that application is voided. There are new statutes in the county, right? There was a board order changing the guidelines for solar signing, and there is the new guidance also from the LCVC. So, it is a really important decision in your hands, and I want you to really, you know, look at it very carefully. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Simeno.
So, Mr. Sadlo, in light of this email from Matt to Shannon, how does that change anything?
It's not as clear-cut as it was before I saw this email, that's for sure. And so, then it raises the question as to whether if you're required to make a decision and you don't make one. So, you can make a decision as to whether you decide to accept jurisdiction and have the hearing on it, but this at least raises a question. And that does not mean that if you approved it or denied it, that this issue of jurisdiction could not be raised at Lupa, it still could. So, it's up to you, but it may be safer to have the hearing. But it is up to you. I'm not going to, I don't want to make the decision for you or act like I am.
So, just for clarification regarding the application appearing to be complete, was there, was there some element of it that, you know, came in and then, under the deadline, and then it appeared at that point to be complete?
Well, I instructed Matt to go ahead with the notice and to send out the notice. I didn't realize that there was a statement made implying that the application was complete. That was after the 181st day, but I did want them to, you know, let's go through the process and then let's see what happens at the hearing as to whether or not we have jurisdiction.
Okay.
But I, you know, I agree with Todd that probably would be safer to just go ahead with the hearing and make the decision based on the information that we've got. We're still, you know, maintaining that the application, that I believe that the courts would rule we don't have jurisdiction. I really believe that.
Mr. Sadlo, just regarding the, you know, having, looking at this case and looking at...
The facts.
The facts. When it really comes right down to whether or not we have jurisdiction, that's really the only question at this point, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Right. The Planning Department is stating that they believe that this application is void and that you should not be hearing it. The applicant has said that they have an email from Matt vote that says the application was deemed complete, and public notice officially went out on the 9th. That would suggest that they at least had some good faith reason to believe that their application had been deemed complete. Whether it actually could have been, since this is outside of the timeframe for doing that, whether they could or not, that may be something that's more appropriate for the Land Use Board of Appeals to decide than for us. So, I mean, I think that's the issue as to whether or not you go forward and have the hearing. It may be that the application is, in fact, void, even if you have the hearing and regardless of what decision you make.
Commissioner?
My thoughts on it are along a similar line to you, that your, the planners have deemed it to be void.
Complete. Well, they're saying that it's void now.
Right. They're saying that it's void because it was, by your perspective, not complete by the 180-day mark, the 181st day. And so, I'm unsure about how, it's not clear to me that the language of this email chain can supersede that, kind of like, the baseline facts.
Right, and I don't really know the answer.
Okay.
And it's something that would be determined by the Land Use Board of Appeals if there was an appeal one way or the other. They submitted this application in March of 2018, so it's almost a year old, which would suggest that it's lingering. Then again, apparently they have waived the 150-day period for making a decision, so that's about all I know.
Do you have any thoughts on how you think we should proceed?
How about your thoughts first?
This guy's a politician. He learns quick.
I do have thoughts, but they're along those lines. I can see that even with this, this essentially evidence that it was said to be deemed complete, that if the planners say that it's, it was void after that 181-day mark, that we still don't have jurisdiction, even though there's something that says it was complete. So, those are my initial thoughts.
And mine are, oddly enough, Commissioner Kula, they are the same as yours.
I came into this day really excited to agree with you.
Okay. It's okay. Stranger things have happened.
We share a love for vegetables. Just want to say.
Ridicchio in specific. At this point, and just from hearing this initially today, the question was from council and from planning, whether or not we had any right to even take this up. And going through an exercise of hearing, of a public hearing, when we really don't even have the right, if you will, or the, within our jurisdiction, to do so, almost seems like disingenuous. So, I would be inclined to say that based on, and the only reason I can say this with certainty is I just, I know our Planning Department, and I know County Council's office, is very, very careful about making these types of decisions, or at least recommendations. So, if I didn't have that confidence, I'd say, let's go ahead with the hearing, but because I do with Planning and County Council's office, I'm inclined to follow what their inclination... their inclinations are.
Yes. Thank you. And I really want to, like, address the application, and I really don't want to if we're going to talk about this. So if we're going to make our decision, you know.
So I'd like to just hear-
Yeah.
Again, from Mr. Sadlo.
I was wondering if we could take a brief recess so that I could talk with Ken Friday about this matter.
I was wondering about that.
Okay.
Okay. Do we want to recess the whole room, or just have you gentlemen step outside?
We can step outside if you'd like.
Would you step outside?
Watch out for that wall, by the way.
Somebody can let us back in.
Oh, they're going out in the cold.
Yes.
Well, this won't be long.
It's cold out there.
All right. We'll come back out of recess, back into our discussion. Okay. Mr. Sadlo?
Well, we've had an opportunity to talk about this and this email, and I think that the planning department is, has remained, their stance is still that you don't have jurisdiction to hear this. And I think from the standpoint of, of what would occur, that decision could be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. And if the planning department is incorrect, it, it will come back and they can have their hearing on the merits. Otherwise, I don't think it's appropriate for you to hear it. So I think that's where we're, we're standing on it right now.
All right. Commissioner, is that your-
Yeah, I feel very comfortable with that. I, I wanted to hear this, and I appreciate your care in this. And my reading of the plain text of it is the same.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention and for explaining it. So at this particular point, based on planning department and County Council's recommendation, I think we'll make the decision that-
So you make a motion?
Make, make a motion that, that we'll go ahead and-
Someone should make a motion one way or the other.
So do you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Yeah, let me get the right language. Just want to make, I would make a motion that we do not-
Proceed with the public hearing.
Proceed with the public hearing on docket number C-11-18/SDR-17-18.
Because you do not have-
Because we do not have jurisdiction.
So we have a motion, a motion not to, to hear the, the appeal based on lack of jurisdiction. Is there any further discussion?
I, I feel torn on this, and I also want to be very careful in how we make our decisions. So that's my one last thought.
Yeah. And I, and I think at this point, it would not be appropriate to discuss the merits of the appeal or the merits of the, of the case in general. So I'm going to sort of restrain myself from that.
Yeah, me too.
Because I certainly would like to comment on it, but that's not appropriate now. So right now, if there's no further discussion, we will go ahead and, and vote to, for the motion to, to deny the hearing of this based on the lack of jurisdiction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
And Madam Chair, I would ask for two weeks to bring you a board order with a written finding. It would still be a final decision of the county that you don't have jurisdiction.
Okay.
It would need to be in writing in order for them to appeal it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you for that. All right. So then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And are there any announcements? We'll go back into formal session. Are there any announcements, Commissioner?
Oh, my gosh. I think barring the fact that I'm totally unprepared, no, no announcements.
We'll talk about them next week.
That's right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming. I appreciate you being willing to be in the process, and I'm sorry that we were not able to continue with this. Thank you for being here.
I guess the one announcement was that we are combining formal and informal next.